So the mayor, council and the mayor can't answer anything that's not on the agenda. So they can't respond. You can, you can give a public comment, but they can't respond at this time.
It's a terrible tragedy that they were all stripped away. That's my comment.
Thank you.
Next we have Mr. Bird.
I'm sure a lot of y'all know me, I'm Mr. Bird. I, uh... I do the Brookshire Blessings Court Drive here every year. I've been doing it for fifteen years, this makes sixteen years. And I'm asking for support, assistance, and participation from the city of Brookshire. The last fourteen years, we've been having, uh, public workers supplying us with trash cans and trash bags and all that. For the last two years, nothing. Ever since we had Mr. Ward come in, no help at all. And I'm looking for some assistance through the city. Y'all have a Brookshire everything that the Court Drive has done here.
Is that it, Mr. Bird?
Sure.
Is that it? Thank you. Okay, we have, uh... Jody Henson, Hennessy?
Good evening, Mayor Alderman, and representatives of the city of Brookshire. My name is Jody Hensley, resident of the Cudi and Royal 4-H Club. And I, along with my fellow members and parents, are here this evening to say thank you for an offshoot gift, um, donated by our club commissioner, Justin Beckendorf, and his kids. We want to say thank you for representing Southmore County and making decisions that affect each one of us as residents. Our end of the county doesn't often get much recognition, but we like to start the wave of change by showing the positivity we have in our communities. We hope these homegrown Waller County birds can bless your family this coming holiday season, that you're reminded of the bright future we have here as you enjoy it with your family. To Chief Heinz, we know the great work you've been doing with the Brookshire Police Department and the challenges you have been putting up with for us as kids, the future city of Brookshire and Southmore County. We say thank you for keeping us safe. God bless.
Thank you.
So Justin Beckendorf and Senator Emma donated the chickens, and we have them here. Do y'all have a refrigerator or...
We...
That we can put the, or they're just back there in the...
I don't think I have room in, how many are there?
Eight, because there's one for everybody.
Oh, boy. Okay. I'm like, I don't think I have room. That's really cool.
Who? That's what they just said, yeah. Y'all want to take, who y'all want to take a picture with?
They want to take pictures.
With me? Oh.
Spatial, he's just spatial.
Yeah, like...
I'm glad that'll work.
I think I have room in the refrigerator.
You have a refrigerator too. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next we have Nellie.
Was that the sign, didn't she, I think I misunderstood.
Yeah, this is for public comments.
The item on the agenda, so that's, that's just for public announcement, correct?
Yes.
You also sign up if you want to speak during the...
During your item.
Yeah.
Okay, that concludes public, I mean, public comments. We'll move on to agenda item number six. Proclamation honoring Carrie Belle Burton.
Right. Do you want to move?
Yeah.
I just need the microphone.
Okay.
Good evening. If the family of Ms. Carrie Belle would stand? Alrighty. All right, today we're honoring Ms. Carrie Belle Burton, whereas Carrie Belle Burton, age one hundred and one, was born on October the third, nineteen twenty-three, and has been a lifelong resident of Brookshire, Texas, dedicating herself to her family, community. And whereas Carrie Belle Burton is the proud mother of six children, including Officer Marilyn Vaughn of the Royal Independent School District Police Department, and has instilled the values of dedication, perseverance, and service in her family and community. Whereas her lifelong commitment to raising her children and supporting the Brookshire community is, is an example of selflessness, strength, resilience. And whereas Carrie Belle Burton has lived through nearly a century of history, witnessing remarkable changes, growth, and, and remains a beloved and respected figure in her community. And whereas the Fellowship Church, under the guidance of Pastor Rodney Blowing, has requested this proclamation to honor and celebrate the contributions and legacy of Carrie Belle Burton. And whereas it is fitting and proper to recognize the enduring impact that Carrie Belle Burton has made on her family and community through her love, wisdom, and unwavering dedication. Now therefore, be it resolved that Daryl Branch, on behalf of the Brookshire City Council and the entire community, do hereby proclaim our, our sincere gratitude and respect for Carrie Belle Burton, and celebrate her life of service, strength, and love.
I'd like for my family to also file out...
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
I am truly honored, as well as my family, with this proclamation from my mom. I call her my five-foot giant. Because she instilled, there are two other siblings. She instilled in us service, respect, community, respect others. We live by the golden rule. Very God-fearing woman. She sing and pray every day. And she also wanted me to tell you thank you. And to give you guys a message. Love one another, be respectful, and always pray and believe in God, because he will surely guide you the right way. On behalf of all my family, thank you.
Hey, can we make another one? About that affair.
Yes. Excuse me. Since I have family from out of town, we're going to excuse ourselves. Thank you very much.
Y'all have a good night. Okay, agenda item number seven. Consider and take action against consent agenda items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and are generally enacted in one motion. The exception to the, this rule occurs when a city council member requests one or more items removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action.
I have two that I would like to discuss.
Sure.
Police report and the financial report, the monthly, uh...
D and...
Yeah.
D and E?
Yes, D and E.
Branch, I move that we would approve the consent agenda for items A, B, and C.
A, B, and D.
He said police report, so he wants to go with whatever.
C and...
A, B, and D would be amended motion, yes.
I'll second that.
So I have questions for Mr. Heinz.
On the other ones first.
I second. Accept minutes for special council meeting on September the twenty-sixth, twenty, twenty-four?
There's a motion for A, B, and D.
I know. Accept minutes for special council meeting on September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And C, Brookshire Police Department monthly report for September...
D, A, B, D.
I was reading them all, okay? Just, just... Anyway. D, Municipal Court Monthly Report, September the twenty-fourth. And E, Bill Paid Monthly Report, September the twenty-fourth. Ma'am.
So Mr. Heinz, uh, I was looking at you. Okay, well, I second, I second.
I seconded already.
Every thirty seconds you receive the votes for the three.
Mr. Green, four. Ms. Taylor?
Four.
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 Okay. Ready?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Heinz.
Yes, sir.
Uh, reviewing your report, uh, September's report, I noticed there was three criminal incidents in the Crookston Mobile Home Park.
Yes, sir.
And I'm just asking, are you increasing, uh, police presence in that area?
We patrol it on a regular basis, just like we would any other part of town. This individual has been apprehended in this, in these cases.
So this is the same individual with three different...
Yes, sir.
Okay, so he's been apprehended. Also, uh, I would like to see more police presence on Third Street, uh, between the hours of four P M. and ten P M. More police presence on that, in that area.
And Fourth Street.
And Fourth Street as well? Okay. Also, I received a report about nine-one-one dispatch, and I don't know if this is particularly true or not, but what I was told that after six P M., that when someone calls nine-one-one, sometimes there's no response. So I don't know if that's, you know...
There's some, there's somebody at our phone twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Okay, so do we do get a response after six P M. when someone calls nine-one-one?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, the, with our new phone system, it has become automated, so they'll have to go through the prompts to get to dispatch.
That's not good.
So when they dial nine-one-one, they have to...
No, nine-one-one goes directly to, to dispatch.
Yeah, that's...
But if you, if non-emergency, we'll go through the automated.
Okay.
Is that the fifty-fifty line or the...
Five thousand.
Yeah, the five thousand. So that's non-emergency.
That's not emergency.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Four P M. to ten P M.?
Yes.
Third, fourth. Take care of it.
Thank you.
Any other deal?
Oh, the financial report. It's just one question on the financial report. And this is for Ms. Stacy. I would like to see a financial report, uh, like this. Is that what this is? This what you call it here? Okay. I know we have the monthly bills paid report, but to make sure that we're tracking the budget, to make sure that everything's being expensed correctly, I would like to see this report every month, okay? And it would show actually what's being spent monthly and quarterly.
Sure.
Okay? For the council, if they'll be good, okay?
I'll send out September tomorrow with everybody.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Do we have to approve those individually, or can they be approved collectively? Uh, Mayor, I'd move that we approve items D, uh, C and E from the consent agenda.
Okay. Second.
Okay. Ms. Taylor?
Four.
Ms. Richard?
Four.
Four.
Mayor, may I interject your comments? Is there a reason why we're doing a roll call?
That's what he said. Just say all in favor, I, I need opposed.
I mean, I'll let you know if there's something legally required to take a roll call. There's not the ultimate agenda that was required. Unless you refer to, to make sure that Mayor...
Well, that's what you directed us to do on the first vote, on the first one, that we each take a vote. And so we did the same thing the second time. That's why we did it, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Agenda item number eight, our, um, new business. A, discussion possible action to approve request for variance to place multiple temporary buildings at thirty-six, sixty-seven, Twelfth Street.
Hi, I bow to all of you. This is Pastor Mishra for upcoming Hindu temple in Twelfth Street. We are trying to put, uh, mobile modular buildings for kids' weekends', spiritual classes, and priest houses, and operational temples. So she's going to explain for further details with Ms. Nemisha.
Can you pronounce her name first?
Nemisha.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I'll be prepared whatever she has documents, and then she can give you one of them.
So the first page is the survey for the land. Second page is, uh, the part we are looking to build a modular home. This is a hundred by hundred feet in front of the seat. So we are trying to buy a modular build, building, which is, the floor plan is this one, the third one. It has a restroom and there are two glassrooms. So we are trying to take a permit for this modular home with regarding parking and with the occupancy load based on this building.
So you're asking for temporary buildings to be placed on the property until you build this particular house?
This is the survey, sir. This is, right now, nothing is there. This is empty.
Yes, I drove by today. So, but my question is, what is this? Is this your final, your final product after you? Because you're asking right now to place temporary buildings on the, on the, on the lot, right? So you're going to place temporary buildings on the lot until you get this done? And what, because this is going to be the building that's going to be permanent, because these are just temporary buildings that you're asking to be placed there, which is not in the city ordinance right now. Only during construction can you have temporary buildings. So you're going to have temporary buildings, and then you're going to get this done. Is that correct or not?
Yes.
So...
What is the estimated time of the temporary buildings? Like, um, six months, a year?
Yeah. Three to six months.
Thirty-six months?
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken, uh... Um, uh, because I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but a temporary building was, was only being, would only be used for office? And there is a timeframe to have a temporary building up, but this looks like, um, something that would be permanent.
That's a temporary, sir, and it's already built. It's a modular home right now. It's on existing plates. It's some, on some another temple. So we are buying from them. If you guys give us the permit, we are fine buying from them, and then we can install that modular on this land.
Mr. Green? Our engineer is here that, you know, she wrote up on the permitting process, if you want to...
Okay, yeah. Yes.
Talk about the ordinance.
Yes, sir, last time I met Ms. Secretary, Ms. Erica, and, uh, just like in every I S T, K T, I S T, Fort Worth, I S T, they have additional educational school buildings. We have already, uh, in other temple in Stafford, they have addition, the educational school buildings. We have to bring that one and put on the property for temporary use. Then when plating, topo, and city approval, Brookshire will approve all this, the face one construction, then that temporary building will go away. So my main question is, for how many, uh, months or years we can use this temporary building until face one construction finish?
Well, I think that the question is to you, how long do you need the temporary building there before you start the reconstruction?
When we talked last time, the plating and topo guy, they said, uh, the city of Brookshire is taking about four to five months for plating and topo. And when I met here, uh, and then they said, uh, city of Brookshire is taking about four, three to four months for approval. And then, uh, within six months, we need to start the, uh, construction, the face one construction. In face one construction, we have sixty by thirty, uh, building with hundred by hundred square foot lot. So according to thirty by sixty by thirty building, uh, how much parking space we need, how much the, what's with the plumbing and electric things? We don't exactly how much it could take time. City approval and then, uh, after construction, we hope we can finish...
Okay, can, can we have the engineer come up, please?
So, we have a team these days. When we talk to them, what they're, what they're basically asked for was portable classrooms. And we asked how long it's going to be before they start construction.
Mayor?
Ten. But the thing is, in your ordinance, it does state temporary construction, like these buildings, if they're not a manufactured home, you know, residence, they are only allowed for temporary construction offices, and then like, and it has to be during construction, after the permit is issued. They're not allowed to be on, on the ground until the permit is issued, and then once construction starts, and then they are to be removed thirty days after construction is over. That's where our, that's what our ordinance is there.
Okay.
They're not actually allowed to be used for any of this side of construction.
And that is construction of a permanent building? Of a permanent building?
So, so the variance they're requesting then is to use, to use it for something other than, uh, other than a construction office? And originally for up to ten years, and now you're saying within six months you would begin construction and be done? How quickly?
Well, I think, I have a team.
And see, that's where I think you need to go back. You need to go back now, yeah. I think you need to go back now, since we have new documents submitted right here in front of us, and you've not seen them. Y'all need to go back now and go back and talk, and figure out when is the timelines for all this stuff, you know?
I don't get the, what's a ten years plan? I don't get that.
When we originally asked how long you were going to use the building?
Oh, I see. Oh, okay, okay, I see.
Because this is what you're trying to permanently build for ten years, correct?
I don't know, maybe. Maximum, uh, main, main concern, maximum maybe three years or five years. How much we can go?
So essentially what he's asking for is variance to be able to build these as permanent classrooms?
No.
Until he can afford to go pay later charge.
Oh, no, no, it's...
This plan is only for pre-construction, I mean...
No, sorry, it's, uh, maybe, maybe...
Because this takes a long time, ten, four years. We have been trying on this. I'm sorry, I'm just telling you this. I mean, it's, uh, you know, one of the board members here, okay? So the whole process is taking longer time. He's needing to start the approval, some of the things. And, uh, we do have some, uh, education is in waiting for a while, so we want to start over. As soon as, uh, we, we make one of the...
Mayor, Mayor.
After that, they have, once the construction is over...
I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. That's, yeah, and that's why I said that there's new things that have been submitted here that no one's seen, engineers not seen. And I think you all now need to go back and talk about this again, and figure out where, where, where we at right now, because this is not the proper setting to decide all of this right now, since we have new documents. So we're not saying no. I, we're personally, I'm not saying no. I'm saying that you all need to go back. Get with the engineers that have not seen this till right now, okay? It's fair that you go back and sit down with the engineers and, and, and work something out and come back before council again. And understand what the ordinances are and the timelines and all of those different particular things are, so we can make a, a good decision for you. Our, our ordinance only allows a temporary building for construction to be used as an office, but what you're asking us is not even in our ordinance.
Right.
Ma'am?
Sure.
Typically, if there's a process for relief related to these kind of regulations, it's built into the rule itself. And certain things like zoning and things like that have processes for that. But essentially what they're asking you to do would, in a legal effect, repeal the ordinance.
Right, a variance. That's what they're asking for.
They're asking for a variance, but in fact, taking action to grant the relief they're seeking, you would rule the prohibition against, uh, using mobile homes for this purpose and all, boy, we wouldn't be able to enforce it.
Right.
Yeah.
This is not mobile home, this is modular building, and this is temporary building. In face one construction, we are trying to put sixty by thirty permanent building. So after city approval, maybe within one year we can finish, so whatever you said, then we'll follow that.
And when the sixty by thirty building is built, what will happen to that building?
They'll take it down.
We already got, uh, they got trailers down there now. I'm not saying them, but it's some trailers from another person they got down there.
This?
Yeah. It's covered because it's, um, not them. I'm not talking about...
So, so I, I still, my opinion only, is that we go back and get with the engineers and work out a plan and come back and, and put the whole story here, because these are new, new... and, and put the whole story here, because these are new, new documents that the engineer has not seen. So, and now we're getting conflicted stories. The engineer's saying ten years, you're saying one year. I mean, it's just, I think we just, you know. We need to go back. We need to postpone until y'all come back with a good plan. Yes, absolutely. Postpone, yes.
Second.
Somebody's second, I'm not reading.
Uh, Ms. Taylor. So do you understand that? So we're tabling this until you guys go back to the engineer, come back with a more comprehensive plan and discussion of exactly what's gonna happen, and then come back to council again, okay? So we haven't said yes or no. We've said, we need more information. You guys need to go get that information and come back, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
I just ain't got it together, man. Okay. We're going to move to letter B. Discussion and possible action to improve placement of storage container conversion home at thirty-one twenty-six First Street. Did you?
That is me. Good afternoon, everybody. Hello. Uh, my name is Nellie, and the reason I am here is because, um, I purchased a piece of land, and I have, uh, converted a storage container into a home that I am, uh, asking for permission to move on to the property. I have had an engineer help me, um, get all the, um, uh, the, I forgot what it's called, the blueprints, I guess you could say, um, for everything, uh, the, the, um, signatures from both the Brookshire Water District and the Brookshire Katy District have signed. Uh, Ms. Beatrice, uh, has obtained all the documents. So everything, um, up to this point has been checked off, um, and it's, I'm just, uh, I'm here today, uh, to just kinda like clarify what it is that I'm, um, trying to do here. She, uh, Ms. Beatrice, asked me to submit some pictures. I'm not sure if y'all have been able to see the pictures or not.
We have it.
Um, you have them? Okay, so this is, the, I tried to print with color, but it, the printer didn't work. Um, so this is the existing container that I have as of right now. And it's a, a standard size storage container that I, um, made into a, uh, like a home. The plan is to add, um, the wood around it. None of the metal is going, correct, the siding. Uh, none of the metal is going to be exposed. All of the metal is going to be covered. And the end product, uh, is going to look, sorry, can't grab this. The end product is going to look something like this right here. Um, so the, the goal is to make it look really nice and very aesthetic. Um, and so that is, um, the reason I am here today.
So, is the storage container finished?
Yes, sir. Uh, except, um, the plating, like the, the, the wood, the siding around it, that has not been done. Um, I cannot put it on as of right now, because when it gets lifted, it's going to shift. And so, um, what they've recommended is that I move it first, and once it's on the property, we can go ahead and do the siding cover on it.
And you've gotten, you've, you've been working with the engineers?
Yes, sir. For a whole year. Hi.
So, is everything up to specification?
No, she, we have, we have comments on their plans, but our, our thing is, in y'all's ordinance, you, you ver- you verify that you cannot build residences with metal. Um, it's one of the, so we are, the interior issue. So we are asking, if she clads it in wood, the exterior is no longer technically metal?
It says, it says we can't build with metal? I thought it said that the exterior couldn't be metal.
Oh, yeah, sorry, the exterior.
So I can put steel beams in my project if I want. I can build with all the metal I want, just the exterior needs to be not metal.
We're asking, is it, is clad in wood, do y'all accept it as the?
Well, you know-
If it's exterior, then it would not be metal, right?
Technically, it's not.
And, you know, I mean, the tiny houses and all that are, are becoming the thing of the, I did some research, I drove by your place too. And, uh, you know, around the state of Texas and different, different other cities, I mean, they're allowing this now. You know, as long as it looks decent, it's up to spec and up to code. And that's why I asked you, what about the plumbing, the electrical, and all of that? Is all of that up to code?
Uh, here, here, uh, just the one.
It would have to be.
But yes, it would have to be. I mean, she would, she would go through all of the process.
Okay, so, so all of that's done, and it's all up to code, right? Has that been approved and all that?
Not been approved yet.
Okay.
Just going through the process.
S- really?
Well, because we didn't know if it was allowed, so, you know.
But, and it will be, it'll be elevated, correct? It'll be on an elevated?
Yes.
It's built exactly like a, a permanent structure. She's building it like a single family.
Right, but it'll be like above, like floodplain?
Yeah, it's elevated as well. It's not floodbeds needed, like.
So, so no construction has been done to this building at all?
No, it's built off-site, and then she brings it on to the ground.
Okay, alright, alright. I, I do remember this. This in, um, I think Art was our attorney at the time, and, um, at the time, we didn't have anything to even enforce not using a metal container. And then it was kinda put on hold, because we didn't have anybody else come to the city wanting to use a metal container. So I don't, I don't even remember if the ordinance was even brought up to date.
No, and the laws kinda changed too, as it relates to our ability to seize a regular construction materials. So, I mean, I think it would, it wouldn't be unreasonable to consider the storage container itself more of the structural components of the house, almost like if you built, you know, sort of using wood frame if you did a steel frame. I mean, some, some of the bigger houses do.
Yeah.
Um, as long as the facade meets our requirements, I don't see a conflict.
Yeah, and it's stronger. I mean, if a tornado and something comes, I mean, you'd be more protected than a lot of the woodhouses.
We recommend that just putting on the permit that it can be, you know, clad with an exterior that is, as a-
That would be my only concern, but it, it sounds like she has plans to do that, as long as it meets all the international codes.
Yeah.
Has your, uh, has your contractor indicated to you a timeframe, how long after it's placed when this exterior siding would be completed?
It's going to, uh, the, the, it's gonna be immediate, so I-
He'll do it within sixty days, ninety days?
I would say within the first three months, it'll be done.
So if we were to, to say we approve this, uh, and she has ninety days to complete the exterior clad after the, after the-
Do you plan on moving in prior to finishing the exterior?
She has to.
So you should, uh-
You know, are, are you gonna move into the structure before you finish the exterior?
No.
So why, I mean, just make it part of the CA, a condition? Do you have a problem with that, you know, on the offside?
Yeah, yeah.
Until it's fully completed?
Right now, I'm living, um, closer to work, so I'm in the medical center right now. Um, I am, still haven't, I still have yet to move it, and then-
Would you have an issue waiting to move in until everything's?
Correct, so I, I don't wanna touch anything inside.
So, to me, I think you make it a condition of the seal.
Yeah, okay.
So, I would move that we, um, that we approve this, uh, understanding of, of what is, what the exterior siding is, and place it as a, as a, um, uh, I don't know, an, an, an attachment? Attachment to the certificate of, of occupancy? That, a condition that the exterior wood cladding be siding be completed before the CA is issued?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What was the certificate called again? It's a certificate of occupancy.
Basically, it's a, it's a certificate that you use to decide on the hand to move in.
It says you can't move into the house until you've completed it.
If you go there and still around and work on it and do some things, if you had to, you just can't do it.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
This has been a long row. Thank you for the perseverance.
What, two and a half, three-year journey?
Before, before I was elected to council, you were working on it, so, yeah.
Alright, well, thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good day. Let's move on to letter C. Discussion and possible action regarding, uh, the ma- major thoroughfare plan.
Because, uh, this is a very long document, forty-three pages, and for the sake of time, I'm gonna try to just summarize, if, if, with the permission of council, summarize this, this plan, okay? First thing I need to say that this master thoroughfare plan, uh, it includes, uh, the City of Brookshire Comprehensive Plan that was done in twenty-twenty. It also includes the Walla County Comprehensive Strategic Plan, the Walla County Transportation Plan, and HGAC Regional Transportation and Master Thoroughfare Plan. It also has to do with the, uh, City of Brookshire Raw, uh, uh, demographic study, and has some parts of the Master Drainage Plan that we need to talk about. So, the Master Thoroughfare Plan is a, um, it is a, um, intersection highway I-ten plays an important role in developing Brookshire economically by introducing new industries that need to be located near major arteries.
Page, this is gonna be page one.
Page one. Okay, um, thereby increasing employment for the city. The Master Thoroughfare Plan will focus on major arteries during I-ten, US ninety, FM three fifty-nine, FM three sixty-two, FM fourteen eighty-nine, and collect the streets to deliver traffic to and from the city through Brookshire into ETJ. So, so basically this plan, it talks about streets, major streets, that will connect as the city grows and Tech Dot start to expand their roadways. These, there are certain streets within the City of Brookshire, like Twelfth Street, Thirteenth Street, different, First Street, different streets like that, that will need to be expanded or for more traffic as development moves its way. So, this plan, that's what this plan is about. Uh, it goes into details about, um, uh, their loop around the entire Brookshire, which is a three-mile radius, a loop around Brookshire. It also talks about in a demographic study, where a lot of the homes that are being built on the northeast, five twenty-nine Starnick Road going back that way, uh, in the next eight to ten years, there'll be fifteen thousand homes built back there, okay? There's also some plans for Tech Dot that's gonna be coming to the City of Brookshire to talk to the citizens about putting overpasses at fourteen eighty-nine that goes over ninety and over the railroad track all the way to I-ten. Also, there may be plans for Tech Dot to put another overpass over by Brookshire Garden, the road that's down over there, over ninety, over, over the railroad tracks, all the way to I-ten. It talks about, uh, three fifty-nine being expanded to four lanes from ninety all the way to Patterson. It talks about, uh, I-ten Service Road from Katy being expanded all the way to Brookshire. Okay, so those are some of the Tech Dot programs that they're gonna be coming to the City of Brookshire to talk about, okay? And with the development of the homes that are back there, most of the property by, by Royal School have been bought up, is bought, purchased as well. And these major streets, and there's gonna be a lot of traffic and a lot of movement through in and out of the city, and the development within the city. So some of these streets will have to be, uh, expanded. And, uh, some of it will, will affect individuals' property at some point. As the development grows on those streets, like Thirteenth Street, Twelfth Street, and different streets, as the development comes to those streets, then it will be discussed about how to expand the street. So this is not going out taking people's property. This talks about and approves for City of Brookshire to be in accordance with all those different entities that I just spoke of with that plan, with this plan. The Transportation Plan, the Walla County Comprehensive Plan, uh, Brookshire, uh, Comprehensive Plan, all of it works in one big, one big thing. And it also affects drainage. There's a master drainage plan that's being developed to make sure that as all the development comes into play, that, that existing residents do not get flooded out. That if they do put the overpass over by Brookshire Garden, there's plans to try to take care of some of the flooding problems over there. And also on three fifty-nine up by the Mobile Home Park, there's plans to take care of some of the drainage problems over there, where the, the water should drain back to the Brazos River, but now it's draining back down to our Brookshire Garden area. So it's important that this plan gets approved, so that we can be in line with all the development and all the things that have come this way. Now, at the end of the day, if it doesn't get approved and Tech Dot start to do their work and move on their side and move into Twelfth Street and all those places, they're gonna just, they're gonna, they're gonna implement it, because they have the right to do that, you know? So, uh, with all that being said, I would like to make a motion that we approve the plan. It's already approved, we just, we just reverent it. It was approved previous council, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So we just, we just-
I believe some of the concerns were there were, there were changes that we wanted to discuss, and, and for some of the roads that we felt maybe were inappropriately,
Yeah.
uh, designed in this master plan, correct?
Yeah, and, and that was Thirteenth Street.
The coffee shop, what, what brought this out was the coffee shop that's going in on Thirteenth Street and three fifty-nine. Uh, as new businesses come in, they have to be cognizant that this, this plan, as we do permits moving forward, that this plan is looked at before we allow new business to come in, and then they have to move their driveways and different things back and forth. And that's what happened to the coffee shop there, that this plan wasn't really discussed when it went in. So we gave them a variant, right?
Yeah.
We gave them a variant, but just moving forward, it needs to be known that-
I did, part of the, the discussion last time was that we were gonna have LJA take a look at this plan, and that we would identify some roads and some areas that we felt that maybe they needed to relook at and, and make some amendments or changes, and then reapprove this plan with those changes adopted.
Yeah, well, every five years, this plan should be caught in, in the document. It says every five years that it should be reviewed as development grows.
I guess, I think that the consensus last time was just maybe we needed to do it sooner than that, because we were having issues with people coming up and, and, and rather than trying to provide variance, provide variance, provide variance, we could make an adoption to this plan.
I think with, with us knowing now, like, I, I mean, honestly, I think that, um, I don't know that permitting was really aware of the major thoroughfare plans, so, and I don't even know that, that, I don't know that that was what we were looking at bef- I mean, this was before LJA, obviously, this is Gunda. Um, so I think going forward, like, we have this in our, you know, in our site, so that shouldn't come up. We should not have to give any variances, because we'll be doing it according to this plan.
Right.
Mr. Green, I know this, this was an area that you had some concern with last time. Is that, are you, I wanna be sure, because I agreed with some of your concerns, I wanna be sure that you're finding those, those concerns are met, if we just simply make awareness of this plan.
My, my main concerns were, um, the fifteen-foot easement on each side going down Thirteenth Street. And I know we were gonna get, uh, a lot of, uh, uh, resistance as far as doing that. And financially, I don't even know how much that would even cost to, to take fifteen feet on each side of that road. So, I wanted, I wanted to go back and look at this, and I guess get with, uh, LJ, um, to, uh, LJA to look at this and make sure this will even work out. You know, because Gunda just kinda pieced it together, and I've, and if I'm not mistaken, I think it mentioned something about Thirteenth Street going all the way to fourteen eighty-nine. So I know that's not gonna work.
And then, who did I, who did I speak with from the, is it you I called, the engineering, the person that you told us to call, Erica?
Oh, Craig.
Craig, yeah.
Yeah, he's not here.
Okay, I spoke to him, okay, and, uh- Okay, I spoke to him, okay, and...
Well, maybe we can have some sort of workshop.
A workshop?
Yeah, to go through this. And kinda tweak it to what we want to right now.
Cause it's, it's the resident side, they're not gonna go, they're not gonna do it on the side where the, where the shop is. It's gonna be on the resident side.
On both sides.
I know, but, but you remember they leaked, they gave up, when he came, Craig came here, he said they really not gonna go there for, um, the, the, what's the north side because of the business at the beginning of the street. So, basically, it's gonna be more fifteen foot on the resident, most on the left side. Most of the residents stay on that side when you go down the street.
So, so the concern in the plan is that as the development grows in the city and all of the different homes and all of the different things get put in, if you don't expand some of those roads, then you're gonna have traffic backups because of the amount of traffic that's flowing through some of those streets, yeah? That's the problem, there'll be traffic backups. If you do that...
We need to do a, like, get, like you said, a workshop because some of the citizens need to come out and address their opinions. Like I said, they're, they're gonna get cut on 12th Street, they're gonna get cut, not the business side.
Right, and it mentions it in here to do a workshop. And it also mentions in here that, that as the development grows, like Mr. Green mentioned, there's not gonna be enough money unless we get grants from somewhere to help pay for all these street expansions, right? So, it mentioned in here that as, as the development grows in those particular areas, then it will be on a case-by-case basis. But it do call for a workshop, yeah.
So, was there, was there a motion, was there a motion in there somewhere?
Well, I guess we need to schedule a time to do a workshop.
I think it makes a lot of sense for y'all to let the engineers take a look.
Yes.
Your recommendation, have in work with y'all, they deal with this kind of stuff all the time, so they can help you with what makes sense as far as a timeline for working in system and hood workshops and that kind of stuff. So, I'd say it's not all the engineers.
You wanna deal with those residents too? No, just...
I know, right? Right?
So, it'd be for the mayor to direct, to direct LJA to do a review of this and come back with some recommendations to council for how to move forward, okay? Can you do that, Mr. Mayor? Give them some direction?
You need a motion on it? No?
I don't think there's a motion, it's just you telling them what to do.
Did y'all understand that? Okay. Let's move on to letter D. Discussion on Status Update of ARPA Funds.
Right. So, you might be able to help us. I asked for this one. I was trying to check the status and I got this report here and it says we have five hundred and six thousand dollars budgeted, right?
Yes.
And we have three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars remaining, from what I can see right here, with ARPA funds. But my question is, a lot of the projects, it originally was like a million dollars and a lot of the projects went to police, right? So, this last project is for road repairs, okay? So, it's five hundred and six thousand, we use a hundred and twenty-two thousand and there's three hundred and eighty-four thousand remaining, okay, I'm sorry. I think my question is, and you may not be able to answer it right now, what happened to the hundred and twenty-two thousand? Because I don't see an explanation in here for it. And if you don't know, you can get an answer later on that.
Yeah.
Okay? What happened to the hundred and twenty-two thousand? And also, at the back of the document here, there's some audit requirements for this on, where it says ARPA Status Report. The standard conflict of interest policy has a no, okay? On this document here, you see this page right here, this one?
Yes.
Yeah, and at the bottom, Financial Management System Plan has a no. Document Management Retention Plan has a no. And then, the single audits for 21 and 22 are NA. So, and if you don't know the answer right now, that's fine, if I can get an answer later.
Yeah, I will, I'll get you those answers. I'm pretty sure the audits, they're looking for single-year audits for the previous two years right now, so that's why it says it for 21, 22, NA, because these are single-year audit just for this project. So, it's, it's different, but I'll get you the exact answer.
Okay. And that's all I have.
Did you wanna talk about the streets that are...
Uh, well... Right, I see the streets and we talked about this before and I don't know if, if that engineer was here. Were you here? Okay, so, and I think as I understand, we still, the City of Brookshire still need to make some decisions on which streets, is that correct? Okay, so that's, that's kinda on us right now.
So, what is the best way to do that? Are we polling council? Because it's, it's difficult to have, I mean, obviously, we can't have, without having an open meeting. So, should we poll council about streets that, I mean, we have this recommended...
That's, I mean, that's the same problem, we can't poll council outside of a meeting, so...
Well, I mean, like, like here, can we, I mean, how are we gonna make this decision?
Road repair?
For which roads, because there was...
It's AD.
It's under the, it's under the ARPA update, this is the project under the ARPA update.
Well, can I ask a question? Have we identified which streets are the worst, in the worst condition? I mean, I'm asking the engineers.
I believe that's where this, where this list came from initially.
Yeah, which ones in the worst, worst condition?
Yeah, these were, I mean, these were all rated as like being in really bad condition. That's how this list got developed in the first place is, is that Gunda, or whatever we're calling it now, went out and did a, did a survey and they came back and said, these roads are the worst roads in need of repair.
So, we have the answer right there?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it should be right there. Now, the question is, that was like five years ago, is it still true? I don't know.
Sure, it probably got worse.
It probably got worse.
So... So, we have a list here, yes. And I'm sure those roads haven't repaired themselves unless some construction's been done over there, right? So, they're still in the same condition and we can just use the list we have.
We need to see if we need to add any as well.
I don't think it's gonna be enough money to do all those.
Yeah.
So, there'll be just a few.
These roads are what LJA has determined that we can do for the amount of money that we have. So, if there's any leftover money, we could add, but as of right now, this is what it looks like.
Yeah, and we won't be able to do all those anyway, we just get the top until we run out of money.
So, what is, what is it gonna take at this point to, for, to get some steamrollers on the street? That's, that's what we wanna see.
Authorize them to go out and put the bid packets together for these main streets and the packets.
Okay.
I, I move that we authorize LJA to go out and put bid packets together for...
I would prefer, but you talk about moving this forward quicker if you could.
Well, I...
Quickly, five, five years.
I'll say Bane Street need to be at the top of the list.
It's Bane's, yes, for sure. It's on there, somebody wills.
It's on there, Bane's is on there, yeah.
And we only have three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, so that's not gonna go far on road repair.
But we got, then we got a, we have a Waller County grant money as well, right?
That's point of drainage.
That's the 1.3 that...
That's drainage, that's not...
It's all drainage, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, 12 of, is it 12 of 25, right?
Do y'all have a list of streets that are underneath the surface is iron ore? Because in the past, we've paved some of the streets, but we didn't go very deep because it was iron ore. We only, we only went down just like the surface.
Sixty twenty-five.
Okay.
Yeah, but we have till 12 of 25.
12 of 25.
And they wasn't, it's, isn't as expensive as some of the other roads. But most of those streets are around in this area, on this side of the... Okay.
Well, I think we've given them a list, we've said these, these roads need it, so now it's authorized them to go out.
I think a motion to move forward with the package creation for the streets named would give them all the guides they need right now to start putting stuff together.
So, so what do we, what do we need, what does the motion?
Some sort of these streets listed.
So moved.
A second.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye! So tired of talking about our crappy roads.
Okay, letter E, discussion and possible action regarding budget for the Veterans Day program. It did have a nice neatly typed out and itemized budget, but consolidated, cut the internet when I sent it to this, this one of the secretaries here. Anyway, I had handwritten, but it doesn't have a breakdown. I had individual breakdowns of everything that I needed from the city. Rest of it I take care of myself, which would be thanks to make it a family-friendly. Any questions?
So, I'm only getting a total of sixteen fifty? Am I doing my math wrong, so, five and two is seven?
There's pass through ID in my...
Twelve. Fifteen fifty, sixteen fifty. So, where would the, what line item in the budget would we...
Under special events.
Take these, it would come out of the special events budget and that would impact the budget for the other special events the city is conducting?
I mean, yes, I mean, yeah, it would come out of that fund. I mean, I think we have ample funds in there, I mean, honestly. I mean, we allocate about twenty, twenty thousand per event, so, I mean, there's, there's room in there.
Okay, so would this need to be coming, would it come out of, just, we'd pick one event and just take these funds out of it, or...
Um, I think, I think actually Jennifer added Veterans Day before the budget, because we had talked about this. So, it was added in there. No, just that, just the twenty, he had asked originally for twenty-five hundred.
She added it in.
Okay, so she added twenty-five hundred, okay.
Well, I appreciate you bringing this budget up. I was the one that asked for, to see this and I appreciate you putting it together and bringing it up to us. And that being said, I would move that we authorize the expenditure of one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for the Veterans Day event.
A second.
So, that would cover everything you need?
Everything he's asking the city for, right?
That's all I'm asking the city for, the other things that I'm covering myself.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Letter F, discussion and possible action to purchase of road repair zipper equipment.
So, back to road repair again. So, this, this particular machine, I seen it at the TML conference last week. And it is a machine that can repair the roads with a two-man crew. And they had it on display down there and they're actually using this machine in Columbus. But before we purchase it, I would like, I'm gonna make a trip to Columbus to see what they're doing there. But this will reduce the cost, you can do a city block for twelve thousand dollars. And after you do that block, you can drive on immediately. So, it's new technology that's, that's, that's out there now and they had it on display at TML conference. It's saving the cities a lot of money.
I believe that was at the last year as well and we came back and Ernest either contacted these guys or something. Do you know, do you have any information about that, Clint, last year? Cause Ernest was gonna contact these guys and go up and take a look at what they were doing, I think up in Columbus, if I remember correctly. And I never really heard any follow-up from that, if it happened or not, so I don't know if anything ever...
I think that the mayor said they came and did a demonstration.
Well, they wanted to, they were scheduled to.
Okay, but we don't know that it ever happened, okay?
So, is this using asphalt or polymer?
Asphalt, or you can use different products, but they were using asphalt.
The only fact I can say on that is those machines, we don't have equipment for them. They, you have to have a wheel over them to put the machine on. And they don't relay asphalt, they mill up the asphalt in the base. So, once that's done, it is, it is pretty much like a big tiller. So, once that's done, we would have to go on and dig that out, put a new base in, or use that as a base to compact it. But then we had to have a paper, just come in and put the asphalt down, roller, to roll the asphalt. And we're, we're really not equipped for that.
So, have you seen a demo?
I don't believe that's true.
Yeah.
What we've seen, what we've seen at the conference, I don't think that's the case.
Right.
So, it's one machine?
Yeah, yeah.
And do you have a cost on the machine, the search of...
I didn't get a cost on it, no, yeah, because there's so many people, but you're welcome to go to Columbus. Yeah, no, this is different.
Yeah, I think it'd be very worthwhile for Public Works to get and see this. This'll be the second year now that we've seen this thing and, and kind of said, hey, let's go and look at this because we know roads are an issue here, so it'd be good if you guys could get a hold of the company. I think I have, if you don't have the information, I think I gathered it, yeah.
I sent it to Erica.
As well, so we can get you the contact information for them. Get a meeting, get a demo, go up to Columbus, see what they're doing, see what, how it works. Because I, I, along with, I agree with Councilman Richards, I saw it down there as well, would be, I think, a very valuable tool for us to have for our road repair program here as well, so...
Okay. So, no action till we get to...
We'll be written.
More information on the machine. Discussion and possible action for Hobus Park repairs.
Okay, Mr. Taylor, how far have we gotten at Hobus Park? You know, I went there and after the storm barrel, there was significant damage there. And I know y'all took the top off of one of those little shelters there. But at the base of one of the, one of the... But, uh, at the base of one of the, one of the support poles, it's concrete cracked down at the bottom. And so I don't know if you all have a plan to repour that and restabilize and replace the top, replace the top. Also, uh, there, I see that you all did repair one of the dugouts, the ten that was flapping in the wind over there, right? So, but, uh, the fencing, has the fencing been repaired? Because there was some safety issues with the fencing sticking out, that someone may get hurt. Did you all repair that already? Yeah, that's.
We redid the lights.
Clint, 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 will you come up so you can talk in the?
We, uh, we redid the lights on the baseball fields. All those are working. The parking lot lights and the building lights for the concession stand, they're on a timer now from six P M to seven A M.
Right.
The baseball fields and the, uh, volleyball and the splat pad are on a timer from six to midnight.
Okay.
Uh, I did notice something else where out there that we have to get repaired. They've ordered a port. There's a junction box on the side of one of those baseball fields that is busted. And their, their wire is sticking out. So we've temporarily ba- barricaded that off until we can get that box replaced, just so no children or anything.
Yeah, I seen that one, that's the, when you drive in the driveway, the one on the right-hand side.
Yes, sir, that first field on the left, I believe, I believe it's ball field one.
Yeah, I seen that one.
Uh, also, they went through all the breaker panels. They said everything's fine. They put the cover back, the one we discussed, they put the cover back in there, uh.
There was some, there was some roof damage from the last storm. Did that get repaired?
On the actual building itself, or?
No, it was the water, the water pad, that little thing.
Oh, we fixed that, we did, we fixed that, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, we, you have L E D lights coming?
They're up.
They're up, okay, good.
Yes, sir, they're up, uh, the, like you said, the, the dugout, we bolted that back down. The cover over the picnic table you were talking about, the way the concrete's broken, and Mr. Kelly, I, I brought that up to him, he agreed with me. Uh, that, that's all up right underneath those big shade trees.
Yeah.
Personally, I don't think we really need that, that pavilion. So my suggestion was just to, you know, cut those poles off flush, fill them in with concrete, redo that broken corner, and, you know, that, that, that would be a, a final, final repair.
Okay, also, uh, we would like to get the debate, the basketball backboards put up on that one court.
Yes, sir.
And also the tennis nets put back up over there. There's no tennis nets over there, yeah.
Sure.
Okay, and then the remaining repairs, I think, would be E D C. Some of the other repairs are E D C. It'd be a done-out E D C budget, yeah.
Yes, sir, we can get that, sure.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Then we'll move to letter H, discussing possible action to complete and publish R F P requests for proposal for renovation of Public Works.
So that's Clint again.
It's you. Come on down.
Um. I know we had talked about, you know, trying to better, do some things to better the, uh, working conditions for the employees there at the Public Works Building.
Yes, sir.
Giving them a break room, you know, giving them air conditioning and a good place to work in, in there and stuff, good eating in their cars and all that. Uh, and I see that you did submit a, uh, scope of work. This is good, but, uh, I needed to be a little bit more details. I do personally. Uh, I need a cost breakdown for these, these items. Uh, we need to also get, get the help from the engineers to make sure that, you know, we get some kind of specifications on it. Uh, we need, uh, uh, some performance standards for, if, when we do get a vendor, that they're gonna perform the work, and if they don't, that they are liquidated damages for not performing the work in a timely manner. So, you know, I would just like for, you know, this to be a scope of services, and then cost analysis for the work, so we can see how much it is gonna cost. Specifications on, on some of the things that you're asking here, you know, tearing it down to the studs and putting in, uh, a car lift. Is there a reason you all know you see fax lifts? That you plug in to raise a car without putting in the end ground? We could probably look at that. Uh, and then you asked for stainless steel benches. That might be an overkill for, for stainless steel benches. It might increase your costs too much. Uh, and, um, and then I'm, I'm sure when you all do select someone, that y'all do a site visit, right, with any perspective?
Correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Miss Malina, that, that was just a preliminary, um, outlet.
That's what we're gonna use for the basis.
We've already contacted the engineers. We'll get them involved, have them come out and do a whole scope of work. Like you said, I mean, layout, everything, we don't see blueprints, the, I mean, whole nine yards.
Right, and resubmit it back to us for.
Yes, sir, you bet, you bet. That was just preliminary.
And I have one thing that, probably not on that, the water fountain that's out front, right there. I mean, the one that's over there, yeah, I mean, can y'all someone look at that one, because it's, it's all credited with it, but it's all.
It just needs to be cleaned out.
Cleaned and, yeah, okay. That's it, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richard.
So at this point, can we, can we make a motion to move forward with, uh, this R F P? Um, and that would, the next step should obviously be to go to the engineers?
Hmm.
They have to draw plans.
So we need to wait until that and then come back?
You know, I'd like to see the cost.
Scope of work is, but I imagine it's gonna fall in their lap first.
Well, the cost will be determined by the, by the project managers. That's the whole point of the R F.
Yeah, but we need.
Back with you, they'll have a, we'll have a scope of work and maybe a, an estimation of cost.
Right.
You can take, and then you can authorize them to go out for business at that time, and then we'll look at what comes back.
Yeah, so this was just asking for approval to complete an R F P to kind of do the, do the work to go forward with it.
Okay.
I mean, are we ready for, to go out for proposal?
Well, I, I mean, getting the scope of work and the plans and all that stuff together that will go with the R F.
At this point, you're just authorizing the engineers to draw, uh, plans?
And the cost before anything's done.
So y'all are okay when generally the scope of work has been presented?
No.
You're not?
I'm not. I'm not. Uh.
You're not, you're not okay with these projects being done?
I'm not okay with this format.
No, no, the, what, his question is, are you okay if we take this, this list of things and send it to the engineers and say, engineers, now, now, now flesh this out. Give us a plan for these items.
Yes, okay, we can do that, but just know that there has to be a more professional document than this, is what I'm saying, okay? Okay, that's, that's what I'm saying.
That's just to give y'all an idea.
Right, I understand, okay.
But I tell you, you had this conversation last week. You got to calm down, cause I, I ain't gonna be able to handle it if it fall out of there, I'm just gonna tell you, so calm.
What's going on here?
Yes, it is.
Hi, blood pressure high, blood pressure.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, letter I.
Okay, it's enough for me. Y'all okay with them moving forward with basically looking at the scope of work? Do you, you want, do you all typically submit a proposal for what it's gonna cost to develop a, a plan? Why don't we just narrow down the scope of work and you can submit proposal, put together the plans and go.
Right, because, because you had mentioned going out for, to get quotes, that's why I said what I said.
Help you to step back to that.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Go ahead and authorize them to draw their plans. We'll take a look at that, just to make sure y'all okay with it, and then they'll be authorized in to go out for the proposals and.
After we see the cost, yes.
I'm sorry.
Uh. Letter I, discussion and possible action to create policy regarding the unauthorized use of the city seal and logo.
Right, I asked for this one as well. So, uh, we need to establish some type of ordinance, in my opinion, that protects the City of Brookshire seal, specifically with Facebook, and also anyone that uses that seal for personal gain, political gain or whatever. Uh, because I've seen some of the Facebook sites that, you don't know if the City of Brookshire site or a personal site. And I've seen some, some information on some of those sites that, that was put out there that could confuse the citizens to think that they're getting information from the City of Brookshire, because they see that seal. So I think I, it's my opinion that the seal should be protected.
I have a suggestion, because this is not an uncommon call. Um, we do have an executive session to talk with me about a couple of things, so why don't we just couple that in that conversation?
Okay. And, this actually was a topic at T M L, because it's an ongoing problem that was being brought out there, yeah.
Okay. J, update on status of reorganizing new positions.
Can we, can we do that in the executive session and move the, move this one up and take that to the executive session?
Can we do that?
Do what?
Can we talk about those positions in executives?
It's not really posted under executive session. You know.
Okay.
As you wish, Father.
So, I see you have a document, Miss Malina, right? Uh, and, uh, you have animal control position here, right? So, we're gonna try to go out for contract?
That's the way it was in the budget. That's the way, uh, Chief had been, uh, kind of dealing with that, cause it fell under, um, his purview over there. Um, but yes, that's the plan.
And, you know, I, I, in T M L, I asked some questions in the Q and A sessions and different things like that. Did some benchmarking with different cities and asked them how they handle their animal control, and most of them are doing it in-house or either, uh, in a local agreement. A lot of them are doing it in-house, you know, so you know, and it's been an ongoing issue for, for a while here, you know, with animals and stuff, so. Uh, we could probably explore the options of, with Katie, they have their, their animal control in-house, they have the, the gentleman that has been doing it for, for many years, well experienced, and they have their own dog catching truck, so we may be able to do it in a local agreement with them. Uh, or, uh, in some other local city, or either consider bringing it in-house. We already have a building there, just need to be built out behind the police department, right? So, uh. You didn't hear that?
He ain't gonna go down, it has no water.
Well, we can get water anywhere. The water's not a problem, so far.
Not to keep animals.
But, I don't know if y'all have any.
I met a gentleman named, uh, I met, I met a gentleman named, um, Paul Miller some years ago, and he is a statewide animal control, um, officer. I called him last week, and, um, he would be interested in coming here to talk to us. To, um, to, to tell us wh- how he can help us. When you contract, and, and, we did this before, when you contract this out, it release a lot of liability on the city. And they're willing to pick up that liability, because they have a license and they have a facility to, to take the animals. So if council would like, I would, I would like to, uh, put him on the agenda. He said he would come here and he would speak to us.
Does he need to come speak to us, or can he just talk to the chief? I mean, chief's gonna hire this or contract this person?
Y'all would have to approve it.
Yes.
Right.
So, I think it makes sense. I mean, you, the real expense in that stuff is the facility and the boarding and the maintenance and dealing with.
Yes.
Even if you have a building, that's not the true cost of it, but I think it'd be worth exploring both, cause you're kind of right at the cusp of.
Yeah. That way, we, we'll, we'll hear both sides, and it will, it'll, it'll help us make a decision which direction we really wanna go.
What's his name again?
Paul Miller.
Paul Miller. Okay, so, next item, finance assistant, right?
Yes. I haven't gotten any yet.
I thought you were, we were organizing positions.
Um, you have to go, we have to go on post, though. We have to post this. Have to have a qualified candidate.
Going to that position needs to apply.
Mm-hmm.
Even if it's an in-house.
Even if it's somebody that's currently on staff, they would have to apply for the position. So, so there is some, so, council can direct positions to be made, funding, but as far as like hiring for the positions, that's up to administrative staff and the mayor. So we, that's why we have job descriptions. We find candidates that are, you know, that are qualified, and, and we post out for thirty days usually, is, is usually.
Unless we do a reorg. We did a reorg, we did a reorg, and we reorged, and Mr. Clint Taylor was selected for one of the reorg positions and got placed in that position.
That's not a reorg, he was promoted.
During the reorg, the council voted to do a reorg. We also voted to defund the, uh, the administrator's position, which took place. We voted to promote Mr. Taylor, that took place. We voted to promote the assistant to the grant writer, but the person declined the position. So all of those different things that we voted during.
When did we vote on this?
Go back and look at the meeting. We voted.
Tell me, tell me which meeting to look at, so.
The budget meeting.
The budget meeting? We can't vote for reorganization during a budget meeting.
That was direction, so it's, it's a little different, I mean, I mean, yeah, um.
What's the big issue?
I know, so what he's trying to say is, we voted on all of that, and Mr. Clint did get promoted to his position, right?
Sure, but that's an appoint, that's, and that's an appointed.
Administrative, the, uh.
The, the rest of the.
City administrator was defunded. We also voted to promote an assistant to grant writer, the person declined. Everything happened that we did in the reorg. Everything that we said and we voted on and did in the reorg happened, okay? And then we get to one position, and there's an issue.
Well, well, no, cause we're making the positions, y'all aren't.
Okay.
I, I mean, they don't need you to help me.
But, but.
Because, because.
I'm not gonna.
Council's wanting to appoint somebody to the finance assistant position, instead of letting us hire somebody through an interview process.
Well, what was it, what, I mean.
It's a finance assistant.
So the finance assistant falls under what? How, how do they manage?
The controller, she would answer the controller.
Do you hire and fire this position?
I can weigh in, right, Erica?
Mm-hmm.
Hire a physician to be Erica at this point, she's the highest.
But it's council designated hiring and firing to a position.
This to the, the, the mayor is the ultimate authority. Council has no authority to hire and fire.
How did?
Except for, uh, except for, uh, uh.
Appointed position.
Oh, yeah, appointed position, so Public Works Director, Administrator, Secretary, you know, Police Chief. But city council doesn't hire or fire, uh, a, a, a finance assistant, a staff member, a public works worker.
Why, why were you doing it right now?
Well.
We're not, we're, that's the question.
No, I'm just trying to state a, state a point of what actually happened, okay? What actually happened, and anyone can go back and look at, uh, what actually happened in those meetings to this point. When we decided to do a reorg, we said certain specific things were going to happen with specific positions. And all of those things happened with those positions until we got to this one, okay? And then we, then we said, council, don't do this, council, don't do that. And, but the other things before that was agreed on and happened.
You must have attended a different meeting than me, because I don't remember having a specific discussion about certain people being pointed to different positions.
So, but I'm not gonna argue the fact that, 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 I'm gonna go ahead, I personally will go, will, will go ahead and say that you can go ahead and post this position. But I just want to let the record show that, that we agreed, and we agreed.
Mr. McNally, that's what you want. That's the meeting we had, that's everything we said, that's the position was changed, that's the, that's existing positions, that's the budget, that's what we decided, that's what's changed, and that's what we said in the meeting, all right there.
I have no problem with the fact that we, that we re, uh, that we reorganized some things within the, within the structure of the city. But I do not believe that we have said that at, at this meeting. But I do not believe that we have said that at, at this meeting, nor would we have had the ability to at this meeting legally to have said, we are going to appoint certain people to these positions, or we're gonna change certain people to these positions.
I think, cuz there's a lot of things that she's.
Look.
Just take a look at it.
Remember that?
It sounds like that he's, uh, Mr. Richards already said that.
Yeah.
Remember this?
Yeah.
Okay, that is right there.
There's nobody's name.
I, I don't recall that, but I didn't make it to the meeting.
There's nobody's name.
It was just a budget, funds the positions.
Right.
I'll take a look at it.
It was only in a secret meeting that you guys had that name discussion, cuz you didn't have it in an open meeting.
Uh, anyway.
Ain't no secret meeting.
Well, he's hanging in executive session.
I, I asked for executive session, you said no, okay? You wanna do it here, okay? But, look, you said no, you said it wasn't on the agenda for executive session.
That's right.
That's right. I asked for this discussion to be executive session, and you said no, okay? So, but, you know, I'm okay with you going out and posting the position and hiring. If council's okay with that.
That would, I think that would be standard for calling it, it's correct.
Standard practice.
It's not standard practice if we did a reorg and it was agreed upon, but that's okay.
Correct, post out, yes.
Sounds like we resolved the issue.
Okay, so, community outreach liaison. No, I'm sorry, grant writer is your other one, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so you have that position. And, and I'm gonna add this for future agendas and I'll do it at the end of the meeting. But that's gonna be to, but I'll talk about it at the end of the meeting. So you have grant writer, and then you have community outreach liaison position here, right? Okay. Okay. That's all I have, sir. Oh, yes? Mr. Taylor? Name of the man?
So, what's the, no action?
No action.
Okay. Next item is Kate, discussion and possible action to proceed with in, into an interlocal agreement with the Brooklyn Municipal Water District.
I asked for this one also. So.
But you want, you wanna talk about it?
Go ahead.
I know it was originally yours.
Yeah.
Talk about it, go ahead.
Well. Yeah.
Never seen it before.
We have it?
First time it's been in front of me, so I can't vote on it, because I've never seen it or had a chance to look at it. Hold on.
Well, when I originally put this on the agenda, it was to assist the water district um, with some of the heavy equipment that they don't have. And blocking off streets, which the streets actually belong to the city. And Public Works, um, um, would be a great help with the water district in fixing some of the repairs. Pretty much it.
And this agreement was submitted to council when Bridgette was here, okay? To council, and she tabled it, okay? Bridgette, it works for you, she tabled it, okay? And I would also like to add that water is, although that's a separate entity from the city, uh, there's an issue with water at some point. The water tables, it's the butt of the city, and it's, it's sinking, okay? Katie is buying their water now. Fosher is buying their water now. We have to find a way at some point, uh, to start to try to recycle our water or save our water. Also, when I ride around the city, I see many leaks, okay? And I ride back by there and those leaks are still not being repaired. And I know we have the Ms. Green here, she's the water district, I spoke to her about it. Uh, at some point, with the low hanging fruit, if we can repair the water leaks in a timely manner, that will help save the water as well. Because we don't wanna get to a point where we're buying our water too. It's gonna affect us financially, okay? Uh, so, I, I would like to, at some point, Ms. Green, um, come to your meeting, to your, your board meeting and talk about it, you know, and talk about what can we do to partner up with, with this water situation. Y'all have an aging waste treatment plant there? We have all of the development that's being done and that we spoke about with the third fair plan and with all the homes and all the local development here. Are you gonna be able to financially sustain all of that? You know, should we talk about maybe bringing it back under the city? Or should we, I mean, we can explore different options, because water is, is, is going to be an issue, definitely. So, at some point, I mean, we would like to, like to come over to your meeting, yeah? Right? Right? Right. And if we get a grant writer, there's, there's opportunities from our founder at T M L for a lot of grant money. Through H G A C, uh, and through different programs that will help the water district, yeah?
If the town has passed a two-year debt debt for the water district, you have enough grants and the city does have to, uh, open in that area by signing off on those grants and awards and those things.
Right.
So, when years pass before the city do that, the city.
Yeah, we need to, we, I'll encourage us to do that again, because it's all of our problem. We can say it's just the water district, but we using that water, okay? So, it's all of our problem, yes. Anyone else? So, do we want to give Mr. McNally a chance to review this agreement before we, uh, decide if we're gonna proceed with it or not?
Did y'all get a copy of that agreement, Ms. Green? The, of the interlocal that, that was drawn up? Okay, so we would need to share it with.
Okay.
With the district to let them, their attorney.
And our attorney too.
And his attorney to review it.
Yeah.
It's the next meeting, we can take hold of it. You bet.
Okay, we'll do that and move on. Number nine, executive session.
Okay.
Okay, it is now nine forty-nine. Let's finish up this and move on.
I know you've seen this man protest up to me.
Mayor, I believe we have one more item after the executive session.
What's that? No, we don't have it. He got, he turned, yeah, just do it. Future agenda items.
We need to make the motion.
And possible action from the executive.
So. Number ten.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, you gonna say that, not me.
So, I think we just go ahead and move into that item, which is the mayor's job to move to that item, and then we'll entertain a motion.
For his accusation.
Just read it ten.
Item number ten, discussion of impossible action resulting for the executive session.
Okay, I make a motion to cancel the contract with the city administrator. Also, allow thirty-day notice for canceling contract. And also authorize a settlement agreement with the contract.
Second. I guess all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now number eleven, future agenda items.
I'll go first. Number one.
No, 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 no.
No what?
Oh, we gonna start with you first?
Yes.
Why? We usually start on that end.
We gonna start on this end today.
No.
What? What?
Ladies first.
What?
Okay. Number one, I would like to, um, somebody say something? Oh. Discuss bringing the pictures of the past and present mayor's, mayor's pictures back to the lobby area and have them put up. Have we got the frames for that?
They're being transferred to canvas.
Oh, okay, awesome. And also, number two, also discuss bringing the, uh, family bricks back, the historical bricks that was in front of the building.
So, that's gonna be in Kate, in the scope of work after we finish. The sidewalk project is not closed out yet, um, for the downtown, you know, for this ADA. We can't do any work on it, but it'll be included when we go out to bid for landscape and we'll include that in the scope of work.
Okay. And one more thing to fix the welcome sign, welcome to butcher sign. Next.
You've been, you've been allowed, mayor, you can move forward.
Ms. McDay, the welcome to butcher sign, um, is being discussed with the EDC.
Okay. So, we don't, we don't need that one because they're.
Since we started on this end.
We kinda quote, we actually did get a quote on it.
Yes.
Did you see the quote we got? We fix it.
Three. Three. No, I mean, some of these, we, we might be able to talk about different, but, um. Nineteen.
No, no, sir, no, sir.
Any of those are administrative.
No, sir.
No, sir.
He got nineteen.
Okay, wait a minute, hold on. Okay.
No, sir. No, sir.
Hold on.
Okay.
Hold on.
They're administrative, they don't need to be here.
Just said, hold on. So, a- again, some of these may be able to be discussed, uh, you know, differently. So, one of them is the interview panels. Uh, there should be one council member on jobs that are hiring, certain positions that are hiring, right? That's something that we could talk about, okay? Also, the other one is the job descriptions. I would like the job descriptions to be reviewed by council before they're approved, before they're finalized, okay? There's something that could be, don't happen, maybe not go to the. Uh, the other thing here is, we talked about maybe consider purchasing the vacant lot that's here down the street here for business parking on ninety. Uh, I think it's up for sale for like a hundred and forty thousand dollars, I have the details on it. Some of the businesses. It's right here by the church right there, Mr. Green, Mr. Green is right here by.
Yeah, it's, um.
What's the school?
To the right of the, um, the church on ninety.
Yeah, on ninety.
I don't know that, Little Side Street.
Right cross from Wells Fargo or something like that? Okay. That can be a gen item. Amphitheater update for the amphitheater that was in the budget of sidewalk, right? It was in the budget last year and it was funds there. Uh.
It wasn't in the city.
Wasn't it, okay, so that's EDC, right? Uh, do we have an HGAC representative for the city? Uh, do we have a HGAC representative for the city of Brookshire?
It'll be appointed on the next meeting.
Are we paying the fee for HGAC?
I don't know, but I did get the designation form, so that's just gonna be on next council.
Okay. HGAC. The twenty twenty-two and twenty, twenty twenty-two and twenty-three, twenty-three artists, we did. You, Mr. Green, you spoke to Baker Tilly at the T M L, right? So, do we have updates on the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three artists? Because we can't even move forward with the grant program until the artists are done.
Right, I can, we can get them for the next, we'll put that on the next agenda, have updates.
Okay. Also, the background checks for hiring employees. Every time we have an EDC meeting, we get to the point of approving the EDC application and we get stuck at the background checks. So I would like to find out what is the criteria for background checks for employees so we can add that to the EDC application and close that out.
We, we do have a form for back, we do do background checks on all employees, so we have a form.
The criteria is what we need.
Okay.
The seven years, five years. Okay, so that doesn't have to be on there, right? The garbage, uh, report. Uh, it's been a while since we talked about garbage. Uh, we need an update on, is somebody out there monitoring the garbage company, keeping up with what they're doing and making sure things are done right so we don't end up in the same situation with complaints next time we have a garbage thing? Is the project manager out there?
They don't pay.
Yeah, paid, uh, the, the person that's out there checking on them, making sure they're performing the job well. We need that, okay?
Would you like a representative from Texas Pride to come?
No, I would just like the per, the project manager on the city side to provide what they're using to track the payments, the performance of the vendor.
Okay.
Uh, it was mentioned in our budget meetings that we were losing money on permits because sometimes the companies come back and amend them and all those different things. So we need to revisit that again. Yeah.
Do you want to put the master fee schedule on to be approved?
Yes, yes. Fuel usage logs. Uh, we need to, uh, establish a fuel usage log to, uh, determine how much fuel has been used in each vehicle. Well, right, in the vehicle, it could go inside the cars.
As soon as we get these, these new, um, fuel tanks, it's gonna have, uh, each person have their own identification.
Right, because right now, we don't know, you know, how much fuel is being used per, per vehicle, per.
I know that the P D, uh, chief, P D tracks fuel usage, correct?
But what about the other?
I don't know about public works.
Yeah.
They feel it.
Okay, there's all those trees at Hobus Park from the storm that are on the ground over there? What is, what's gonna happen with that?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna burn them, but we're under a burn ban right now, so we can't.
Okay. Uh, the economic development funds transfer from the city of Brookshire to EDC. Do we know if that's been done? Before, it was like three, three months behind.
I don't know, but I'll check on that.
Okay. Christmas festival. Right, MLK?
What about Christmas festival?
Well, where, where are we at? Are we, do we, do we, the council approved that we're gonna do it? And we have a budget and the council approved that we can move forward with Christmas festival yet?
Yeah, we approved it.
We did?
We, we approved it.
I'm, I'm in Monique, right, okay, so that's done. And then, do we have something in a, for a festival for MLK? Cause that's right behind it.
We do, I don't, we haven't, we have the money allocated, but we haven't, I don't have any planning started, but obviously we need to.
We need to, cause it's right behind the.
Yes.
Okay, the new year. Okay, the EDC office move. Is that on the city? I think that's budgeted on the city side, right? EDC office move.
It's move?
Yeah, EDC's moving from back there. Over there.
Are we, were we talking about moving into the annex?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's in the, we have budgeted dollar amounts in there, but I think, I think it's on the city side.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will, I'll look into that for sure.
And the last one I have is that we need a monthly credit card statements.
Okay.
That's it? That's your three.
Did you get three out of there?
Okay, um, Mr. McNeill.
Uh, so, we did get permit, uh, the master fee schedule review, to, to do a review of that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then another thing is, uh, we need to get an update on what's the, what's happening with the, the building that's behind the, the P D. That's been authorized for more than two years to be for sale by council. And it, I don't know, I've never, I've never seen it offered for sale, so I don't know why that's the case, what's happening with it. At one point, uh, the P D wanted to use it for storage. I, I, I don't know what's ever happened with it.
Right, so, chief, do you wanna, what y'all wanted to use it for?
For getting, yeah, let's, let's just put all this. Animals, yeah.
Then that's it. The animals gonna die.
Still empty building.
No.
Okay.
You have another one, Mr. Mc.
That's it, just the two, oh, one currently. Mr. Richards took one of mine, so. He had, he had a long list, so.
I think he did enough for all of us.
I know.
Ms. Taylor?
I just have one, um, just the workshop, try, I, it don't have to be on the next agenda, but you know, get a date, so.
The master third, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Damn, I forgot to tell y'all before the engineers left, um, we talked about it. Instead of y'all getting sticker shot with them just jumping into this, you know, review and ask for a plan, they're gonna put together a cost proposal for you and come back and even talk you about it.
Okay.
But those things aren't cheap, so, I mean, you may wanna scale it back a little bit, we'll see, but, um, that's gonna be the next step.
Okay, that was it.
Just one?
Yeah, that's a major one.
Hey, Mr. Green?
Um, I have one, uh, reimbursement of kennet bird.
Reimbursement for what?
Kennet bird reimbursements.
You ain't going back to, you ain't going back to.
I heard you were. We not going to twenty.
Okay. That's it?
Get it.
Hey, y'all, just be ready for a long meeting. Um, and the last item we have is adjournment.
What are we adjourned?
Don't forget about the cancer walk on Saturday, y'all. Y'all didn't even put that on there for the event.
All in favor?